We now call to order the meeting of the Winter City Council Tuesday, February 4th, 2020. Tracy, could we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Lauren?
Here.
Councilmember New?
Here.
Mayor Procham, Allen?
Here.
Mayor Viasse?
Here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chapman, would you please say "By Delegations", please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, next we have approval of the agenda. Mayor and Councilwoman, we're going to take off Dr. presentation regarding the animal shelter survey that was done. At least we can't make it tonight, but we'll reschedule and get right. Move to the approval of the item. On the consent calendar, I would like to move item A and move that to discussion item.
I've been voted motion. So am I.
So, Dr. Johnson, say it again.
Okay, so we have motion, whether second, to move consent calendar item A to discussion item number six. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Dr. Johnson, thank you. Next, we have public comments for anything that is not on tonight's agenda. I have one sheet turned in so far. If there's anyone else who'd like to speak, their sheet's in the back that fell out. The one we have here is from Tina Loudon.
Good evening, everybody. I'm not going to mean everybody. Tina Loudon, 320 Nima Street. I attended the census training a couple of weeks ago, and I have a couple of questions for the city. I want to know what are the plans to rally the citizens of winters to be counted in the 2020 census? And at one of the informational events that Mary Ann Lawyer and I attended representing the Winter Senior Commissioner of Aging, there was at least seven, seven out of about 45 people there that represented our city. That was really, really awesome. Is there a city employee representative for the census 2020? And as we know, it's coming up. And if you got your California presidential primary election, I put them too, you will notice on page nine, the invitation to complete the 2020 census questionnaire online will be mailed to you. And the March 20th, 12th to the 20th. Census Day is April 1st. So, I encourage the city council to really get behind this. It's important. An undercount of our population could affect services of families and children, planning for public transportation, development of rural infrastructure, funding for hospital roads, forecast of housing needs, preparation for emergency services, and business growth in cities and towns. We need to get behind this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, you can pass those over to Tracy there. Inadvertently forgot to do the council staff comments. We'll do that after the public comment. I'm sorry. So, I have Debbie Hunter.
Hello, I'm Debbie Hunter, and I live outside of town just to the west. I want to say that I am in favor of the Climate Action Plan, and I know that you're putting together a commission for the Climate Commission. And I'm hoping that the goal of this commission would be to make the city of Winters more climate neutral. And I would also like to say that it'd be great if the commission could look at, in a regional sense, in other words, sort of outside of the city limits also. And I say that because just west, near us, there's already 60 acres, will be 60 acres of solar panels, and that those solar panels are there to power the city of Winters. And it never comes without controversy. They're on prime land. And I'm always a proponent of saving agricultural land, and so here you have two good things. I guess if you consider it that way, you've got solar panels, and you've got prime land, and they're coming sort of into conflict. So, these are just things to consider, and I hope that the commission, you know, overall looks at what the energy needs of the city will be, as well as other things, and can look at it in a regional, in a regional way. Thank you.
Thank you. I have another one here from Bill Legatida.
Thank you, councilmembers. I live outside of town, too. I've never spoken in front of the city council. I'm a little nervous, so I'll try and make my way through. I'm here to address a couple of rumors that have been swirling around this bright new, energetic citizens initiative movement that you've all been made aware of called Keep Winters Winters, and which I'm a part. And one of the rumors that I would like to dispel is that this group of people, community members, citizens, people who live outside the city like me, are anti-city council or anti-city manager, city staff. That's absolutely, could not be further from the truth. These are dedicated members of the community, citizens in Winters, who are proud of the work, the hard work that all of you continue to do on our behalf. However, we do believe that extraordinary times sometimes call for extraordinary actions. And extraordinary action that we've chosen has been in state California law since 1911. It's the initiative process. It's not an attempt to subvert the legislative process of California. It's an attempt to enhance it, to enhance it for the benefit of the people. And the extraordinary action that we're concerned about is the potential expansion into the North Area Planning Zone. We believe that a development of that size is so consequential, so monumental, so existential, that in this one case, the members of this group believe it's important, that it demands a vote of the people. This is a one-off thing. This is not an attempt to go around the normal legislative process in the city of Winters. The other issue that I want to bring up is a rumor that this initiative that passed would prohibit any annexation in the north or outside of the city. That's absolutely not true. It does not prohibit annexation in the north area. It simply says that if you wish to do it, you need to see a major approval, approval of the majority of the voters of the citizens of Winters. We realize fully that this, if it were to happen, it plays an extra burden on our hard-working city council and our hard-working city manager and staff. We realize that. But Keep Winters Winters is a group of people who consider themselves to be a community of ideas, innovative people. We realize that simply saying no is not an answer. We have ideas and solutions that we would love to share with you, and we're willing to meet with any one of you at any time at any place. We may end up on a different political track down the road, but speaking on behalf of the group, I say we all share the same ideals, and that is the appreciation of the wonderful work that's done in the city by the people of Winters and the surrounding community. So, thank you. I'm glad I made it through.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak during the public comment on anything that's not outside of town? Okay, seeing that, we will look back to where we should have been before that, but the council staff comments. Councilmember Warren?
All right, we met last on January 21st. On January 23rd and 24th, I attended the League of California Cities Policy Committee meetings, both on Thursday and Friday. On Thursday, the meetings were on transportation. On Friday, they were on environmental quality. And basically, what we're currently being asked to do is to look at SB 54, which is an Allen bill, and AB 1080. These are identical bills that will require, or that will help reduce the amount of single-use plastic packaging and products that enter the waste stream. And they're asking for us to write a letter supporting that. So, basically, instead of saying that recycling is the responsibility of you, the consumer, when you buy the product, it's saying that let's make these products so that they're completely recyclable from the beginning, or compostable from the manufacturer's inception of the product. And I'm open to discussing or listening to anything you have to say on those bills, if anybody wants to talk about them. On January 28th, I went to the Keep Winters Winters presentation to listen. On January 30th, I attended and helped serve soup for the annual Supes on with Don Saylor. A lot of people from his room were there. Wade was there with his very famous clam chowder. He was serving it up. Carol was there. John Donlevy was there. Dan was there. A lot of people from Winters were there supporting something that provides money for nonprofits. One nonprofit a year. On February 3rd, I attended a manufacturing advisory meeting at Altech and Dixon. It was a presentation on the U.S., Mexico, Canada trade deal. Yeah, it was pretty informative. It was, they talked about workforce modernization legislation, and really kind of hammered home that we lose a lot of jobs to China, and how we can train our students in Winters and Dixon, Slough County, Yola County for jobs in the future. I also, on February 3rd, met with City Manager John Donlevy about this agenda. I also had a Hispanic Advisory Committee meeting, and we had a presentation on climate action, and we talked about the census also. And on February 4th, I had a coffee with many people from Winters, and it was great to hear about items of concern in the town, and just hear about the shared love for this town that we all have.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to report on last Tuesday, January 14th, I did attend the Florida Housing Committee meeting, here, council chambers. Dan McGuire, and people from the neighborhood groups, neighborhood groups. So, on the 4th of August. On Saturday, January 25th, Chamber of Citizens and the Year Dinner. We coached up Winters. And I had a senior manager this afternoon.
Thank you. Councilmember New?
Thank you. On the 22nd of January, I met with Jean Ashdown, our building official, and talked to him about seismic retrofitting for our downtown, non-reinforced masonry buildings. And we are looking to see what we can do to make it easier for them to bring their buildings up to earthquake standards. On the 24th, I met with Dirk Brazil. He's the CEO of Yola County Habitat, and I worked with him to do the agenda for the meeting following week. Also, on the 24th, I met with the swimming pool group, who's trying to find ways to keep the swimming pool open long-term here, and hopefully opening it in March. And that committee is quite busy, as you know, because I've been waiting. Toast to the Town was on the 25th. That was a fine, you know, together. On the 27th, we have a Yola Habitat Conservancy meeting, and I'm happy to report that was the last meeting that I have to be, had to be chair of that group. And so, that's a little less than to be right now. On the 28th, I met again with the swimming pool group, and they're working really hard, and I'm mostly just an observer, occasionally have something to input, but listening to their ideas of how they can make it work financially, and they're really working hard at that. On the 30th, I went to the Supes on, did a food on in Davis, where the fine clam chowder was served. And the funding went to the Acme Theater Group, which is really a youth, what do they call it? Youth development, thank you. Youth development. And I didn't realize that that was what they were, that they were making. Tuesday, February 4th, I met with the city, met this morning with our city manager, and after that, I went back downstairs with Dr. Jean Ashdown again, the earthquake retrofitting. And that is all right here. Thank you.
Mayor Procham, Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. On the 22nd, I attended a Valley Clean Energy Subcommittee meeting, and on the 25th, I also attended the Year in Review Dinner of talent. On the 27th, I met with the city manager and the mayor. On the 29th, I attended a youth day meeting, and they selected Ashley Delagato's design for their new logo. So, she won $100 in the pizza party for the graphic arts class at the high school. And on the 30th, I attended, as mentioned, Supervisor Saylor's Supes on. Served a 10 gallon of wine.
Thank you. I also attended the Chambers Dinner, the Toast to Winters, on the 25th of January. Had the honor of presenting the Senior Citizens of the Year Award. On the 27th, I also met with city manager and Mayor Procham. On the 28th, I attended the Prime Commission meeting, where they approved construction plans for a triplex that will be built down on the north end of Second Street. Be nice to get some more housing in town that's in development. On the 30th, I also attended Supervisor Saylor's 16th Annual Supes on. They did a great job, good job on the clam chowder, had the best one there. Winters was represented very well. There was, I mean, Wade had his soup there, Carboni's had soup there, Buckhorn was there. So, Winters was really represented well. Good job, thank you. They raised, I believe, over $47,000. And on the 3rd, I met with the city manager to go over tonight's agenda. Thank you, everyone, for all your time to go through the committee work. Okay, we'll move on to discussion item number one.
Mayor and Council, IMB's been pulled down. IMB is a resolution, basically, the successor agency, which is basically the city council now, for our former community development agency. This is the recognized obligation payment schedule. At this point, this is a schedule that's produced by the Department of Finance from the state of California. This is a formality tonight. This is actually, I think, the third time that the council adopted this identical payment schedule. We then moved it on to the county. Item C is a resolution adopting an injury and illness prevention program for the city. It's our safety plan for our employees. Don't get hurt, or you end up in front of the Safety Committee. Item D is a resolution, basically, accepting $13,000 from the Yola Energy Watch, who is providing additional funding for our Civic Spark fellow. Item E is an amendment to our agreement with Wallace and Cool, who is an environmental consulting company. This has to do with monitoring out of good old landfill. Basically, three things that they're doing. First is they are monitoring our general water monitoring program there. The second is addressing some issues regarding, some permitting regarding the cap. And then the third thing is that they're doing all the annual correspondence with the regional board, and handling that for us. So, item F is a work order, reported in current. The city council approved the on-call agreement with them at a previous meeting, but this is, they're basically doing water analyses on three different things. They basically oversee our water management plan. They are doing a little additional work on the Winters Highlands project. They're doing some analysis regarding the Sweden project, and they are also doing a tune-up on our overall water master plan. Both of the first ones are, I consider, directly reimbursed work paid for by the property owners and the developers on that. City's picking up the tab on the update. And finally, item G is the final acceptance of the Winters Highlands Phase 1 improved, public improvements. This goes back to the subdivision improvement agreement. The city engineer gives the green light on accepting the improvements. This helps especially some of the businesses and contractors that work on it, ultimately it proves up in leases. I have the final intentions on those for now. And that's the consent calendar.
Okay, comments on the consent calendar? Anybody in public? Nothing? Motion? Seeing that, open it up for motion.
I move that we approve items B through G on the consent calendar.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Your motion and a second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Passing, see, Nancy. Items B through G. Okay, now we can get on to discussion item number one, which is a public hearing for the proposed rate increases for city integrated waste management services.
Mayor and councilmembers, we're going to note to have a public hearing on the proposed rate increases for integrated waste services by waste management, and to, assuming that we have no other protests, to adopt Resolution 2010, adopting the new rates that proposed. As you know, we have a tenure franchise agreement with waste management, and they have annual adjustments on their rates using the Customer Price Index, CPI. And they also look at tipping rate fees that may or may not go up and down at the landfill. So, we have come back to you a couple times on tipping fee increases, and having a public hearing set up this time will, this will allow us to not have to come back and do a public hearing for the next five years. So, the races, the rate increases will be based on the CPI and tipping fees that may or may not occur, that increase or decrease, which I'm, they do actually go down. We did do a public hearing notice that we mailed out to all residents, haven't had any responses in protest. So, assuming that you adopt a resolution and improve the new rates, and hold a public hearing.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Just one, just to clarify for people who may not know what the tipping fees are. This is what the county charges, what is that, in order to take the refuse from Winters and dump it into the landfill, and charges are going up due to increased regulation.
And those, little costs, just improve it at the landfill, those type of things. And plus, C and D, which is, markets are really challenging in terms of finding places and having to, some of the stuff is being transported over to other facilities, because they don't really have stuff on site there, so that increases costs. How can people get better once they just digest or running full speed, and eventually the competition for something is high side? And C and D has been really challenging. It's hard to find some names that really run that well.
Yeah, maybe just one little add-on on tipping fees. The landfill has a very comprehensive capital improvement program that they're going through. Much of this is driven by regulatory requirements. They've had to go through lining the landfill. They've had to expand in some areas, which all adds into the cost, but landfills are highly regulated by the state of California, and many of those things are all kind of coming together on things. Yola County's been working their best, as Carol mentions, everything from getting the digester going. The big fees right now have been just the capital costs that they've rolled in, but hopefully they'll be able to get to a point where they'll level stuff on.
They're also trying to earn the money for accepting a lot more waste from, I don't know, so they'll have more volume coming in. We still have a really good rate because we're a preferred customer, or we have an agreement with them that keeps our rates lower, so they charge other people more money than we need, so. There were a couple of other things. I know we talked about it before, the new voucher program, everyone should have gotten their vouchers, which will enable you to take a truckload of refuse, or recyclables, or hazardous waste to the landfill at your leisure, rather than having to come the one day that we were having the rent at the court hearing. So, hopefully people look at it, throw it away, take their way shot to use it, so, but it could be used anytime in the year, and or else they can do the curb site, which is ongoing, like so far, so.
We received that voucher, our office, and first I just, the waste management advertisement. I opened it up and looked, and started reading it, and just, you know, stayed on there about being a voucher, and so I made sure I put it away and save it, and I hope other people will take the time to read it as well and throw it away. So, what happens when people lose their voucher?
Well, we gave Carol a stack of extra ones, so hopefully, fingers crossed, the honor system. If they lose one, they can reach out to Carol and come to say, well.
I did put a notice in the city news line at the Capitol.
So, we did notice, like, the one that I definitely knew was not in Spanish as well.
Yeah, we have it on the local website, where it should be translated. It's hard to put English and Spanish both on that such.
Okay. Questions? Thank you. If not, I'll go ahead and then open up the public hearing at 6:56. If you want to publicly like to speak to the waste management rate increase. This Loudon.
I downloaded this notice of public hearing about proposed rate increase. And I, again, I'm just speaking for seniors and low income. The rate went up $1.19. I know to some people that doesn't seem much, but if you're just on SDI, that could be substantial, and it's a 3% increase. And I just wondered if there's any, any way that you consider the seniors a senior discount or anything else like that? Just thought I'd mention it.
Anybody else still would like to speak? Yes, please come forward. To the microphone, you say your name. Come on.
Joe Kermit, 308 Main Street. You probably know why I'm here. It's very, it's very evident that the state has regulations, and it's going to cost us. Can't be reading about that. But the city could do something about the seniors and that 14.5% that we brokered out in 2010. And I'm not saying the 90, I'm just saying the 40. When the city was in a jam, and the, all those people out there said, we'll go play it, and I haven't heard a word. And I haven't come up here probably for a year now, but I was a couple of times. I haven't heard a word. So, all I'm asking, to think about. Because there's a lot of seniors out there, just like Tina said, that 40 has, that tax is a lot more than a dollar, $2. It might be $20 a month, and that means a lot to some of the seniors. To me, I can take it, but there's some people can't. And so, I think you should think about it. It's not, I, maybe it's a lot of money, maybe it's so much you can't do it, but at least think about it. And I haven't heard a thing, anything in the paper, nobody, unless I say something, nobody even knows it's there. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Mr. Pickroll?
John Pickroll, 488, whoa, 488 Main Street, and I'm here on behalf of the Buckhorn. I'm, I remember when Lori Letton would be proud of me. I'm, I remember when Roy Linton would be proud of me. I remember when he was up here talking about garbage, and so I gotta carry Roy Linton for us tonight. Last year, my PGD bill was $176,000, and I didn't pay attention as it got to be one of my biggest expenses. So now I'm watching the garbage, and it's kind of tracking the PGD bills. We recently installed a compactor. Took over a month for the garbage company to figure out if the compactor fit into your contract. And then when I found out that there would be no savings for having a compactor in the face of a mandate two years from now when I'm supposed to do that, so I'm befuddled. So I went from six yards down to two yards, like, two years ahead of time that there's no savings according to waste management. It goes on from there. I'm trying to imagine how to scale up to do more garbage compacting, but I can't see the point in investing to have the same rates. But I think you guys need to look into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, by Zion.
I just wanted to ask if you could direct staff to sort of work with waste management to see if it's possible to get a 20-gallon tote. Our smallest tote here are 32.
Small ones are 32, I believe.
Yeah. Because where my, where my children live, they can get a 20. And so if, if the amount of money being, and the service is less, you know, you pay less for that amount of service. Because I've noticed myself, my wife and I, we live in our house, and two of us, we have a 32-gallon toter. And some weeks, there's one bag of garbage, and we recycle so much. I mean, ours, our recycling and our greenwashing goes, so. But our garbage can, so, it's virtually, on a battery, it's got two bags in it. So, you know, for myself, I wouldn't mind saving money every month to have a smaller tote. And I know they're made, and we call it, and Katari offers them for a smaller rate. So perhaps you could enter some kind of discussion with waste management to see if that's something that could be offered, to help our seniors who, you know, or anybody who has to save money, doesn't generate. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Taylor Gully.
Taylor Gully, 210 Hammond. I am speaking on behalf of the Lunters request today, but mostly himself. I, I think the tipping fees are obviously needing approval, right? The, there are these external reasons, and we have to, you know, go with the flow. But the, the idea and, and purpose of this resolution seems to be so that we don't have to go through the public hearing process, which I understand is costly. Part of that is because of companies like mine, which charge for legal advertising. Regardless, I still think it's an important part. When we see the participation here tonight, this is an issue that people care about, and to, to avoid that discussion, a hard discussion about the increasing costs, what that means for those on fixed income and others, just, it, it just doesn't seem like the right direction, where this is very much so the kind of discussion that I would like to see more of than not.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak during this public hearing? Okay, say no, and we'll close the public hearing at 7:03. Thank you, everybody. Would our waste management representative like to address any of these questions? Have any to add?
I'll just put it on the spot. Neela Ruffey, as waste management. I think John's concerned, I think we could address outside of the council chambers. I think that's a discussion that we don't have to have here. As far as the tipping fees, in most contracts, they are an automatic pass-through. It does go to council, and it does have to be reviewed along with the annual rate adjustment. Waste management doesn't make any money off the tipping fees, as we've discussed in previous times. So there is still opportunity for the community to come when those rates are brought to council. So it's, it's not going to be behind the scenes, so there's definitely discussion, and we don't just implement the rate through, it's an approval process that has to be followed. And some of the other concerns that we had. As far as the 20-gallon car or senior discount, unfortunately, those weren't originally negotiated when we acted and implemented this new contract in 2017. It doesn't mean that it's not a discussion that we could have later on down the road if that's something that council would like to bring to its residents. But again, you know, to implement new services does cost additional money. And so that's just one thing that I want to lay out there in the beginning. I'm not sure if council has any questions, but I can address here tonight.
Do you do 20-gallon totes anywhere else?
It's very, very rare. There are some contracts that do have 20 gallons, but these are very old franchise agreements that we have. Here in the Woodland District, Woodland, Yolo, West SAC, in Yolo County, we do not have 20-gallon carts at all. So in order for us to bring something like that to the city, it would require a lot of money and capital and everything to order the carts and bring them out. So it really wouldn't be a cost savings at this point for residents.
I have a question for me. Yeah. So in light of the, what I mentioned earlier, the SB 54 for AB 1080 that would reduce the amount of single-use plastic and make the manufacturers themselves have products that are either completely compostable or completely recyclable, not, you know, that how they have like a mixed layer.
The clamshells.
Yeah, there's clamshells, or there's a, like a chemical layer, or there's a, a raft on top of something that's recyclable, and either you take it apart, or you just can't recycle it. Anyway, if this passes, do you think that the recycle stream, your recycle stream will be either easier to handle because it'll be purer, or do you think that there'll be less in the garbage because more can be recycled, because it'll be a pure recycle stream?
So I think all in all, if those pass, it's a positive. Not only will you see a reduction in your trash, but depending on which location you're at, if they're making compostable material that is pure compostable, then your organics cart is going to increase. And if it's pure recycling and it's marketable, then absolutely, your recycling tonnages are going to increase. And that's going to help your overall diversion as well in each jurisdiction. So we can definitely push for these those to be passed. I think it's, it's a great thing all around.
Great. And I know that doesn't have anything to do with us handling tipping fees at this time, but it does down the line help us.
Yeah, definitely.
Sure. Yes.
I've got a question. On the bulky pickup, everybody pays about $5 a month with all the extras for this bulky pickup, this four-year bulky pickup. I think there's very few, if any, people use it. How many people use it, do you know?
Yeah, so we actually can give you that data. I don't have it here tonight, but I sent Carol a monthly report of all the curbside pickups that are, we have. We started doing additional outreach because we didn't see it very highly utilized in about 2017 and 18. So we started a new campaign for outreach. So I'm not sure if you guys remember seeing, but there is a postcard that comes that talks about the bulky and the dates. Since that outreach started going out, the participation increased. So on average, there's between 20 and 30 people every month that are utilizing it.
I have, so, but.
Well, there's 1,900 residential homes that is mailed to.
Okay. So 20 or 30 a month using it, that seems like a place where we could save some money and make it be an optional thing for people if they want it or not. Because that's $60 a year. I can take my dump tray and fully load it to the dump for 60 bucks, and it'd be more than 40 yards. And I just think it's a way for seniors and low income and stuff like that, especially if they don't feel they need the bulky pickup. That'll, you know, save them three or four bucks even with the inquiries a month. You know, so I, I'd like to see us make that an optional thing.
Okay, that's definitely a discussion that we can sit down with John and Carol and start a discussion. I don't have a answer for you tonight about that, because we have to run numbers and everything like that, as you go within the contract.
Yeah, that, that's definitely something we can talk about. Keeping the bulky item in some semblance is important from the standpoint that you've got to give people that mechanism for them to get rid of the bulky items. If you don't, then they're in everybody's orchard and, and just dumped all over town. The ability, when somebody says, well, what am I going to do with this couch? Or what am I going to do with, you know, mattresses or what have you? We always need to have an, for it. But it's, this is absolutely something that maybe we, we can talk about. This year, we've, we've gone to the voucher. It's a one-year look at this thing. You know, after a year, we'll bring it back, we'll see exactly how the thing is worked. Because it, without question, we're struggling with it. We're looking to see how we can maximize the value. So why don't, the one thing we committed is that after a year, we will bring the thing back.
It definitely helps the seniors, they don't throw anything away anyway. They give it to their kids to throw away. They'd save money on that.
And I will say, your guys' jurisdiction is very unique, where you guys have two bulky options. Many jurisdictions have one. It's either vouchers, it's curbside, or it is the bulky event. And so your guys' jurisdiction has always had two options, so it's been very hard to kind of determine what's, what's more popular, what, who's utilizing what more and who isn't. And so that's another reason why we wanted to pilot the voucher program, to see if that's something that would be utilized more, because we did see a decline or not even an increase in the bulky event participation. So we are trying to work through some of these things, but they are, again, continued conversations that John and I can have.
I just have a question on the vouchers. So, so I'm excited about the voucher program. I've lived in other areas that have had it, and I haven't thought of it, but it's very successful where we're, but are we able to track the numbers?
We are. So I'll be working with Yolo County, specifically Marissa over there, and she'll be able to track it and give me the reporting and the numbers that I need. And so not only will the scalehouse be collecting the vouchers, I'll get them from her when I see her every month, but we'll also be able to try the tonnages based off the tickets and information coming in. So I do plan on coming at the end of this year and kind of giving you guys an overview and data based upon the pilot.
Guys, I think we should look at that. The bulky waste part of it again, maybe a little bit later on, and, I mean, I, you say you're paying $5 a month. I said, it's around $16 a year. I've been in my house 17 years, I've only used it once. It adds up to a lot of money, but we can maybe get a, a charge per pickup or something instead of paying $16 per year, something, something to look at. One other question I had was, if you could, are there any kind of incentives to our bases, our commercial customers who do go to compactors like Mr. Pickroll was talking about, to help kind of reduce?
Yeah, so I know that the hotel has been looking at compactors, and we've been working with them for quite a while. Compactors are a little bit different. They compact, so it's a three-to-one ratio. So you have one bin, that, it's, it's not just a two-yard, it's, it's a three-to-one ratio. So it's more like you're compacting six yards and sending one pickup. So you're saving space by having one bin, and you can save the number of frequencies for your service as well by having a compactor. So that's the difference. And so the rate that we had given was one that was already pre-approved, and it was just equivalent to a six-yard commercial bin rate. Typically, compactors can range anywhere from two yards, I guess, to 15 yards, to 20 yards, to 40 to 50 yards. And so I think what they're looking at for the hotel is like a 15-yard compactor. And depending on the type of compactor, it can range from a per-hall rate versus a per-month rate. So there's various factors that all have to be considered. But yes, I mean, typically, compactors, depending on the amount of waste, could save you money, and it could not. It just depends the amount of volume and the frequency per, per service.
And I would like us to look at, do, do, to maybe, if that'd be, if these, if they're brought up about affordable, you know, maybe some type of a rate subsidy or something for people who can't afford these rate increases that we're putting, you know, some type of an income cap, where we have seniors on fixed income or other people on fixed income. We can look into what, what the possibilities are? Is there anything out there, any grant money you can do to help low-income people with these types of things? What can you think about?
I'll throw the grenade over to the city attorney and let him know.
I'm happy to write a memo to the council on that. What you run into with that is that you can't have the other rate payer subsidizing the seniors that were, or, or low-income folks who receive a discount under Proposition 218. And so if you were going to provide a discount, you would have to come out of your general fund, so you would have to pay that discount. And that would mean that you'd have less money available for other services that you provide. So I'm, if you like, I'm happy to write a memo explaining how that would work, and you can think about it. But that's just fair warning. You're fairly limited in, in setting rates that would be lower for seniors for a payment less than their fair share. The one solution I think that some communities use is along the lines of what Mr. Diaseos was talking about, where you have to lower, you know, for seniors who may generate less money for small totes. But if there were that repetitive problem, that loudly that Caleb's talking about, that probably wouldn't be a very viable solution in the short term.
Probably wouldn't say much, but.
No.
Yeah, I think it's maybe something when we start working on our agenda, start talking about our general funding with them, and see what we can do. I've got a big memo right now.
Okay.
Think about for future. Thank you, everybody, for bringing that up to us. Okay, any other questions?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pickroll. Oh, it's Kayla's time.
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Some of the, thank you, Bill, I don't think it would have been brought up if you hadn't brought it up. So some of the ideas that Kayla's saying just doesn't, on the garbage deal, commercial just doesn't pass the smell test. It doesn't. If, you know, I went from six yards to two yards, I don't know if you guys know how expensive it is, it's really expensive. So I'm being penalized because I got a compactor. If I get two dishwashers and two busboys to go out there and jump up and down on the regular bin that we have, I could make it into two yards. It would work. And it, I wouldn't have to have it picked up as often, and I wouldn't get charged as much. So technically, you know, when I take pictures of my garbage, it's full of, you know, milk containers and things with air in, all kinds of things with air in. All I'm doing is squishing the air out of it. So I, I think you guys are being taken for right. I know I am. So how much have you looked into this? And I keep bringing it up, and I keep bringing it up. But, you know, I think you got to do a better job.
You know, tonight, tonight's agenda item is looking at the tipping fees, not necessarily revisiting the whole contract, so it is something that we will look into for future developments with waste management. Other questions, comments? If not, yes. Pickroll's request. Yeah.
I, I, if you just tell you, it's not a going discussion right now, it's something that's being talked about, and we'll continue to talk about it.
Well, in theory, because it's compacted, it should be, have to be picked up less, so you should pay less because waste management isn't taking as many trips to pick it up.
Maybe to certain amount. It's probably like all of them.
Yeah.
I can just tell you, we're, we're talking about it, and eventually this will come back as, as what we're working on it. Right, if, this isn't part of the discussion, right?
Okay. There's no other comments? I'll open it up for motion.
Please, Dan.
Close public hearing? Yeah, I can close that 7:03.
All right, I'll, I'll move to approve resolution 2020, dash 10, adopting refuse service rates increases for the state.
We have a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Close. None. Pass and see now. Thank you. Okay. We have discussion item number two, which is a public hearing, adoption of resolution point nine.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Yeah, staff brings to you tonight the resolution twenty twenty dash oh nine. The bad news is, this is the third time that staff's come to you for authority to submit a CDBG application. But we are cautiously optimistic about this particular funding round for a number of reasons. It's not competitive, it's what they call an over-the-counter grant application. So first come, first served, and they open up the applications on February fourteenth. So staff is working with DOMAS and with Yellow County Housing to get this application prepared in time to hit that send button at nine o'clock on February fourteenth. The other thing is, it's very skewed to project readiness. In fact, eighty percent of the threshold requirements are to that very end. And this project is ready, the plans are approved. If the funding's there, it'll it'll buff the bed virtually immediately. So with with that, I would add that other elements of this particular NOFA that bode well for for us actually getting this project done is for the first time, they're considering program income, of which we have over seven hundred thousand, as additive to the ceiling on the NOFA. In previous CPG NOFAs, if you had program income, that was subtracted from your grant amount. So the ceiling of the grant was the ceiling. In this particular NOFA, the the program income is additive to the grant. And so if we're successful, we will have available resources of in excess of four point two million. And even with rapidly escalating costs, we're pretty confident that that there's enough budget to get it done. Confident to the point that in our conversations with the developer on the budget, when when council approved the application last January for the for the twenty eighteen NOFA, excuse me, I'm trying to thought, but but the like the contingency reserve was only five percent because we were right up against that three million dollar ceiling. We'd encouraged the developer in in their budget preparation to to take that more to kind of industry standards, which is probably closer to ten percent on a public works project. So in that four million dollar estimate, it reflects a healthier contingency budget. So with that, the the staff recommendation is to conduct the public hearing and adopt resolution twenty twenty dash oh nine. Any questions?
Questions?
Hopefully, questions.
We'll go ahead and open up a public hearing at seven twenty-two. Anyone in public that would like to speak about this item? One hand up. Two people, please come forward.
Good evening, Marlene Bell, and I want to come here as part of the Winter Senior Foundation. I want to thank you for your support with seniors and the foundation itself. But I also want to encourage you to move forward in the approval of this project. Winter Senior Foundation is quite visible in town, and we are growing in interest among the community members and support. We have a tremendous amount of support. The one thing we don't have is a home. And that means we don't have the support of the community in hosting events, providing a central place for information, and continuity of program. So I want to encourage you to approve this application, and I thank Dan Maguire for all of his work and the staff towards this effort. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Karen May, one of the consulting corps. I echo Marlene, and I also want to add that this is a wonderful project to get seniors out of the house and into socialization. We still need that. And blending the cultures in winter is so important. And I think having a common ground will certainly add to this. So please, please approve it, and we'll have a nice celebration when it's all done. Thanks.
Bruce Chapman, fourth generation Winters fellow and pastor of my new church here in town. And I just want to say that on behalf of myself and numerous members of my congregation, I'd very much like to see this senior center happen. As I I look around, I notice one thing. When I'm any younger, let's do this thing while we're alive.
My name is Bob Johnson, nine fifty Potter Street here in town. I'm going to echo what you've already heard, and I'm sure there were more of us tonight who bring this issue before the city council. It's not a new issue, as all of you know, and it's something that in my three and a half years here in Winters, and I'm a very new member of this community, this has been debated and discussed numerous times, as you well know. I'm currently the president of the Winter Senior Club, and we talk about this often in our meetings once a month. And I've been told by many, many more senior folks than I that they're tired of hearing this conversation because it doesn't go anywhere. So I think at some point, and to put a positive spin on this, I can't imagine a more beneficial building in town than a senior center. One of my desires, and Karen May and I have talked about this on more than one occasion, is to have a united senior group in town. There are certainly different interests, different age groups, different things going on with each organization. But to call us seniors, I think, is a really uniting kind of thing that we should all embrace as a city. It's a shame we meet in a community center, as you know, and there are probably at any given, we have a once a month potluck. We probably have between thirty-five and forty-five days, and it's used during the week for Meals on Wheels program that our seniors take advantage of as well. But it's a big, big building for a small group, and I'm sure the city would have a lot of different uses for that space if it weren't seated us at certain times in the month. And I know that Karen thinks the same about being in the police station during her meetings times as well. So our goal, and I echo what Bruce said, it'd be nice in our lifetime to get this building built. But I I'm optimistic. I've talked to Dan before about this project, and I think he is careful with his optimism because he's been doing this a lot, a lot longer than any of us have. And I understand his optimism this time. It looks like we have a much better path towards success. So I thank you for your time and seeing me consider this project. It's a well, well overdue and a very, very needed building in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else would like to speak during the public hearing? Ah, God, I'm bored, please.
I'm Tina Loud, I'm a commissioner for the Winter Senior Commission of A.D. It's a long title. I talked to Debbie this this evening and concurs with everybody else. Debbie is our chairperson. She's in, but hold up right now. And it'll be wonderful to have a party there. You know, we are party animals. I keep looking at Dan.
Two months.
I'm curious about the program income. What is that?
Oftentimes, when when the city receives CDBG funds, they put that to work in the community through a loan. And that loan might be a business loan, or it might be a loan that helped, like the Omenwood Apartments, do a rehabilitation. When those loans get paid back, whether it's just payments on the loan or the entity repaying the loan in full, when that when those funds come back into the city, they're considered program income. So they're still CDBG funds. Technically, they're still controlled by the state, but the state gives local authorities some latitude in making sure that those those funds can be reutilized within the community. So that's what program income. Does that help? Not really? Okay. Somebody else want to take a crack at it?
Somebody else?
Anyone else?
I hear that higher authority.
During the public hearing, anyone else? Okay. And then we'll close the public hearing at seven twenty-nine. Questions? Anybody have any comments on this?
Let's get this started.
Yeah, I think we, like all your many, I said, we think we've all wanted this for a long time. It's very important. We have a good chance this time.
Yeah, hopefully, third time's a charm.
Exactly.
Get this done.
Everybody, it's an application. It's an application.
That's right.
We're tired of being the bridesmaid.
If there's any more comments, if anyone would like to make a motion?
I'm from the staff recommendation.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Close. None. Okay. Thank you, Dan, for all your work in getting the application ready.
Yes.
Well, I'm particularly motivated since the city manager's told me I can't retire unless I'm applying. Like, so.
Everybody wonders, you know, what does Dan would do? Now, tonight, he's getting up with these back-to-back items that if he has to cut these things done, he wouldn't be retiring.
He is motivated, but speaking of third-time chairman and all that stuff, as as a transplant in Kansas City, if you think this is long, fifty years is a long time to live.
Don't even go there.
Okay. So.
He's retiring. He's at the committee.
You got six more months of that.
Next agenda item, intergovernmental agreement with Yellow County Housing.
For for a number of months, staff has been involved in a lot of discussions around success in management with the impending retirement of numerous staff members, one of those being yours truly. And if we already have an intergovernmental agreement that that has with Yellow County Housing that has served the city quite well on on grant management services. This IGA that you have before you this evening then folds in some some elements that would typically fall into the housing manager. And and the staff recommendation includes maybe the observation that in over ten years of affordable housing steering committee meetings, I don't think Lisa Baker has missed one. And so she understands the community values and all of the discussions that have taken place over the years on various projects, on revisions to our inclusionary housing ordinance, on the development of our housing element. Yellow County Housing has been involved in every step of that. So from a from a continuity standpoint and institutional knowledge standpoint, above and beyond the the technical expertise that would come to the city through this this IGA, I think council could feel very comfortable that we'll we'll stay on a path that will result, as a as a jurisdiction, we've been very successful in creating and and maintaining affordable housing. And the staff recommendation to to expand the IGA with with Yellow County Housing, I think, would would be a huge step in ensuring that that's indeed what happens. Questions? This is here. Agree. Okay. If there's no questions?
Any comments from the public on this?
Public hearing on this one, I believe. Yeah. Other questions or comments? I just, I I think, you know, I agree. I know Lisa Baker has been there at the same affordable housing steering committee. She's there. She's got a lot of information that she shares with us those weeks, a lot of experience. And I think it's just part of our transition to your party at some point. I was getting on those Kansas City comments, but.
All right, all right.
Yeah, I think this is a good idea to have an agreement in place to kind of transition at this time.
So just because I'm Lisa Baker's friend, I'm going to just ask her to come up and tell us some of the great stuff that you're involved with on that bulk of federal and foreign. I won't have to pay my own bills. Gee, thanks, Jesse. I think more importantly than what's going on at federal and state level, and what's going on at the local level and the work that we've been doing, I would first like to make sure we talk about that quarter to the commissioners. And they adopted a new strategic plan, which has us taking a very aggressive stance towards working in the arena of housing. So this is one way in which to do that because it's not just about what units we can develop by ourselves, it's about how the communities can actually develop for themselves in that way uniquely theirs, and how we can help facilitate that development, whether it's bringing technical expertise, or it's talking about regional collaboration, or it's bringing funding sources, or it's bringing grants and payments. So this is just one of the many strategies that we're employing to try to deal with the really unspeakable shortage of housing that is affordable to the people who live in our community. And for that, I would say, if allowed to move forward to do that, I would be true.
Thank you. Questions? Comments?
I'll move to staff recommendation.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Close. None. Passes and no losses. Okay, moving on to the next discussion item, which is the animal services joint powers agreement.
Mayor and council, I'll take this. Since the fall of twenty eighteen, the there's been basically a steering committee that's comprised of city managers and appointed council members. Council member Callen represents our council here on that group. But since since that time, we've been taking a very serious look at the overall provision of animal services within Yellow County. The costs have been going up literally exponentially over the the past number of years. There's there's some key needs. Number one, cost control. Number two, is looking at ways of better engaging a lot of the volunteers and philanthropy that surrounds animal services. That leads into the need for a shelter, a new shelter. The current one, very antiquated, is challenged to city police, especially when it comes to volunteers. So before you deny, this is part, is the initial part of the three-part process that the cities are going to be going through. Tonight is the the idea that the city will sign on to the concept of the joint powers authority for animal services. By getting into the agreement, basically, you're starting the first part, which is what they call the governance model, to to come up with and working this for how collectively we can work together as a group. The second is the strategic planning part of the process. That's where we look at services, that's where we look at the overall operation of the facility, it's also where we start figuring some foundational elements of the type of shelter that would be generated with also, with the idea of how it would be paid for. And then the third phase would have the JP move into what they call the operational model. That's where literally we get the tattoo and we are joining a hundred percent. Each phase of the process, the jurisdictions have the option of opting out during that. But tonight's that that first phase, this is a really important process because animal services are very important. Some of the other jurisdictions have options that they are looking at, and on on the long term. And on, on the long term, we're trying to find a way of stabilizing yield for all operations of things. In some cases, we need to absolutely have some of the jurisdictions say, yes, we're going to belong, or no, we're not going to belong. So tonight, staff recommending that you approve the agreement between Yellow County and the cities in that you authorized the mayor to, to sign this. We're the first ones in, we represent about two percent. But I can't tell you that, that for some reason we've become more influential in this process for some reason because I, I would just share with you, we really don't have any choice. But on the other side, we can carry a little bit of weight in, in the overall guidance of a lot of these things. So if you have any questions, I can have a try and answer for you.
Questions?
I think you've spoken to this before, but just for the people that at home or who haven't heard it. Right now, when we're paying the fees to the sheriff department, we're paying for their salary, their purse obligations, their, their business model. And it's a big penny, it's, it's very expensive. This would be a cost saving effort, I mean.
It would. The, the, the operational model right now is, is really expensive. But it also misses some key aspects to it. Number one is the business element to it. Licensing, span, neutering types of things where you can actually generate revenue. In the past year, since we've started all this, anybody who's on social media will see all those pictures of the dogs and everything. There's, there's all of a sudden a synergy that's happening of, of marketing. But it's a direction that doesn't fit within the same, you know, most of the animal services officers, really good people, exceptional. Not so social media savvy. They are not the same folks that we need to bring in, especially from just the volunteer aspects, winners. Oh my goodness, we have probably one of the best animal groups in the entire county here. And it seems like anytime there's a cat walking up the street, it shows up on Facebook, you know, this your cat lost or something. But getting those people engaged into the process also helps with fundraising and just the energy that goes into it. So the model that we're looking at, it's kind of breaking away from sheriff. I can tell you that Sheriff Lopez, very committed, very committed to this whole process. As an organization, they are undergoing a lot of change, a lot of retirements from folks. So this whole process, it's really nicely into it. The new under sheriff is, is he met them two weeks ago, totally on board. So this, this should be a very exciting time. Once we get into the operational phase of everything, we will see enhanced engagement with folks. Sorry if Lisa Gaines isn't here tonight, because I think she would get up and, and talk to the excitement that they're starting to get. We need them to get really excited because we need them to raise literally millions of dollars to, to, to go towards the shelter. So we're watching it get better.
I'll make a couple of comments. John's right, I wish Lisa could have been here to do her presentation. I had a conversation with her about it last week. Because they did a whole survey thing and, and they got some really good results on that. Positive input for, for this process. And I'm definitely in favor of this JPA sitting on the, the board of it and stuff. And one of the things that I think is real important about this is that it's not just a public thing, it's a public-private thing. It's, it's a, you know, one of the things we've talked about already, and I know it'll be one of the in more depth and one of the other steps is, is given the, the private people, the, the three yard rescue and flip people that have an actual seat at the table on the board when this thing is formed because of their ability to bring resources and volunteers and and their participating in these meetings that we've been having has been extremely helpful. So I think, I think we're definitely headed in the right direction for the animal services, for sure.
Yeah, I know, we're, I think, Lanners is the first one to be willing on whether we can move forward before this JPA. We see Davis scheduled for February twenty-fifth, Woodland on February eighteenth, and March third. West Sacramento, Kevin signing it.
They've actually been to some of the meetings, so that's progress.
But I think every time that the contract comes up or, you know, our animal services grows up every year the services are getting to the sheriff's office. I think a lot of people in town feel it could be better. I think this is a good way of, you know, this is a good first step in trying to figure out how it can be done better. And I think the idea of public, private, and individually doing it together, making some more money. Like Jesse said, maybe some of the dues cost without having the public employee benefits paid, things like that. It may help, something that's all going to have to be ironed out. To me, it looks like a good step forward. I noticed also that UC Davis and the Yojadehi were invited to be on this. Do you know whether they're interested in?
Absolutely, without question. The, the center from UC Davis provides most of the med, med care for the animals at shelter. It gives a chance for some of the, the students to, to work on things. And, you know, the tribe, they're always our partner in absolutely everything that we do. Their generosity, but also just their participation brings a lot of juice to the whole field. So it's, it's going to be a really good process. And probably one of the, the highlights that I've found is that for some of the cities, Woodland, Woodland and West Sac pay almost seventy percent of, of the, the whole deal. So they've got every reason to be there. But the, the meetings are really getting down to the brass tacks of various things as we move this thing forward. Having our private partners and the community involved will, will be critical. Because one of the nice things, the Unleashing the Possibilities Group, which is the one that Lisa works with, and she works with other ones also. But everybody's stepping up saying, okay, yes, we're gonna, we'll be able to deliver this. And, and it ultimately, it's just going to make for a much better result in all aspects.
There's no more comments, I'll turn it up for a motion.
Yeah, I'll move staff recommendation for the JPA for animal services.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? None. Asking unanimously. Last discussion item for tonight? No, second to the last. The next is the sixth cycle, twenty twenty-one to twenty-nine, hopefully. How's any on that? Request for proposals.
Mayor and council, August twenty twenty-one, city's housing element will expire. We're in what they call the fifth cycle. We, in twenty thirteen, we received for our housing element approval, it was an eight-year approval, meaning that it expires in twenty twenty-one. Tonight, we're asking you to approve the request for proposals for us to get consulting services to come in and work with staff on the, the generation of the housing element. There are three main components to a housing element. One is the discussion of the, the general housing in the city's general plan. The second is a review of the, the existing housing element and a review of all the different programs. And then finally, the third is the preparation of a new housing programs and goals to meet the regional housing needs allocation that are provided. It's a technical document, it's a policy document, and it's a forecasting document. In the RFP, actually, in page ninety-eight of the, of the agenda, there's a calendar in there. The council approves this tonight, we're going to put this out on the street of the main consulting companies that do this type of work. We expect that we'll have somebody to the council sometime at, at one of the council meetings for approval, and then hopefully to have the engagement begin in May. By this time next year, we will practically have to have the thing almost done. The reality for us is that it's, it's the general plan document, it requires an environmental document. It is going to require a lot of public engagement, participation. But more so, we're going to have to have this thing reviewed by HCD and basically boxed up, wrapped up, signed, sealed, delivered, no later than May twenty twenty-one. If it's not done by then, it, it, it will be a real problem. The HCD has made no qualms. This has to be done, it has to be approved and adopted a hundred and twenty days before the expiration. So there's a lot of incentive for us to get things done as far as we're going. Obviously, some of the, the prospective planning issues that are on the horizon will play a very big role in this because one of the things that HCD is asking for, we live in a data-driven world right now. The, the housing element and some of the, the, the information I provided point to the fact that HCD, the governor, Department of Finance, really isn't nothing around regarding any of this stuff. So we're going to have to do a good job on putting this thing together. It affects many things. It affects grants, things like tonight's CBDG grants are, are all predicated. Both the Attorney General's Office and the Governor, HCD are all telling everybody that we've got to get this done. So if you have any, staff recommend that you approve the RFP and answering questions.
Questions?
I have a question. So considering the decisions that we made between now and May twenty-first, does this influence any of our housing decisions that we might make in this under?
I don't know. For the most part, as we're moving forward, this deals with us starting in October twenty twenty-one and moving forward. So we'll, we'll still be living in the same world.
I guess what I would, to be clear, does it slow down any, anything that would be coming at us at this time?
Questions, governor? You guys have a comment on this?
There's a question.
Yeah, please come forward.
Yeah, just, um, I'm there, city council members. Peter Meyer, twenty-one East Davis Street. I got a quick question on this. Is this to, just to make sure that we were in, that we're, that our housing plans up to what the state is requesting? Or is this kind of best for what is winters or? Or what was kind of the idea behind bringing in the consulting firm and doing all this?
So the housing element is our element of our general plan. It's also guided and a mandatory reporting document for the state of California. Housing is, is a very high priority within the state. We're required on an annual basis to provide reporting and statistics regarding the implementation of our housing element. The overall structure, ultimately, the housing element has to, it not only follows the structure, but it has to be reviewed and approved by the state housing need department. So, yeah, it's, it's a pretty serious document, we have to file it. If you're not in compliant with it, Governor Newsom applying taking office, I think he sued seventy-five cities in, in California to get them in line because they had non-compliant housing elements. So pretty serious stuff.
Yeah, I just, I don't know, it just seems kind of odd that you have to bring in like a big firm to kind of go in and kind of update your, your plan or kind of what you have going on, you know?
Well, you know, I'll, I'll tell you, as far as the consulting services go, in a lot of ways, it's like, we know you know, ultimately, we're the ones who decide what we want to build. Sometimes you need that technical engineer to make sure that they design the plan right. So a lot of what we get, SAICOG gives us a lot of technical data and a lot of those things. The documents, a policy document, it's a technical document, it's a functional document, all kind of wrapped into one.
No, I got one more question too. Is there kind of a way to think outside the box instead of having these giant builders come into town and just kind of do what they want? Maybe have local builders, you know, come in and build like one-off houses or, or something? I mean, I know it kind of hits in the housing, I didn't want to say this earlier, but I just, I just kind of agree with you. It might be a possibility to do.
You can't come to the meetings and then you can give that input into the process. Okay.
Part of the process of doing this, doing our housing element, we'll be holding workshops and taking public input on various items like that that people want to hear from.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to think of ways to think outside the box and keep some of that money here. Because, you know, right now, I think for a house that's built, I think it's like a hundred thousand to set to New Jersey. So it's a pretty substantial amount, you know, from Hognian. So it'd be nice to keep that in the county or communities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please come forward.
Denise Cottrell, two ten Main Street. So I have a question about, does, does the housing element, the housing element and the general plan, is that it's like an overlay with, with the current general plan that we have now?
It's a part of the general plan.
So, okay, so we're using like a really old general plan to discuss what our housing element is going to be?
The housing element that we have was adopted in twenty thirteen.
Okay, so it used that old general plan too then?
So the housing element, or the general plan has several elements within it.
Right, right.
Several of the elements that are in there have been updated. They're not from nineteen ninety-two.
Okay.
We've gone through and updated several of those elements. And this is one that we have to update, it's required by the state. That's why we will make sure, I think by bringing in a consultant to do all this legwork on it, it's for, they bring in expertise where this is what they do specifically. Our staff in-house, I think they've got so much on their plate as it is to try to add this to what they already have. I think would be a little too much, not that they couldn't do it, but trying to do it within the timeframe that we have. I think it would be, could bring in someone from outside.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not disputing that, I just, I'm trying to to, to think about how we've started, also started like looking at climate and that, and wouldn't our housing also, or how we decide what our housing element is, which I think is also within the general plan, right? Wouldn't we want to also look at climate, but we have this commission that hasn't, or this board that hasn't started yet that's going to do that, but this has to be that, I mean, don't we need both of those?
A lot of things intertwined. This is a housing element that, that, that the housing element is then to itself.
And, and climate won't have any, and, and, because I guess, does the climate, client, does the housing element look at where housing will be placed? And the design of that, of that housing? And the design of that, of that housing? No? Then what does it look at?
Yeah, the, the housing element is a the city has a general plan that has zoning.
Right.
And in it, there's zoning for housing.
Right.
Based on the zoning, there's, there's different types of units. And what the housing element does is it goes through and it comes up with an overall strategy for implementing two parts of housing, market rate housing, but also affordable housing. The state of California has, and through SAICOG, has given us a mandate that says, within the next planning period, eight years, well, hopefully eight years, we'll build five hundred and fifty four houses. Two hundred and twenty or two hundred and twenty-four, I didn't look it up in there. At about two hundred and twenty of those to be affordable for low and very low people. The state's basically saying to come up with a strategy within the context of your general, your housing element to provide those.
So, so when we look at this, will there also be considered like changing our zoning or density to meet that? Or are you going to follow the general plans that's laid out right now? I guess that's what I'm trying to understand.
Well, we are going to, there are a couple of things that we're working on. First, we've received a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar grant. And in that, we're going to be looking at densities and housing, the idea of doing some specific planning. One of the things about a housing element is that you go through and you look at your city and make sure that you have the densities to be able to meet certain housing goals. We're going to be looking at, at fully an array of things. One of the things I would suggest that you do is go on to our website, citywinners.org. There's a tab for current planning. And there's an entire outline of all the things that we're going to be doing in regards to housing. There's an entire section that talks about SB two grants, that talks about housing strategy and things. And I think those definitely answer all these questions.
Okay. I understand that we have to look at housing, but I just wondered how, how does, too, we're connected with climate and also with changing?
There's a lot of information. Go on to citywinners.org, click on the tab that says current planning. There's a whole section on there that answers all of that for you.
Okay.
I wondered if we could get to you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilligan? Thank you, Mayor Councilmembers. Did we get the SB two grant? It sounds like you just said, that's the note, we got the SB two note that we applied for. We were rewarded that, and does that cover the cost of this update? Oh, I'm sorry.
I, yeah, no, I, so I got a reply from, the staff and I are laughing about this. So I put together all the grant application on it. And got an email saying, received. Couple of weeks later, I get this reply, realize that they had told us, oh, they're going to put you through the grinder on this thing. The consultant I talked with and putting the thing, they're going to beat you up on, on your application. I got a thing back. You're approved. All right. But they go, it just has to go through one other thing. I don't know if the next thing's meat grinder or not. I know that they just sent me a thing back saying it was approved. So I just slid that email over onto the file. We'll see. If they send me, the way that they do it is, they send you a contract. Have we received a contract? We haven't got the contract yet, but I don't think anybody's got a contract.
But it's only February four.
I'm not sure what Denise was referring to, but when I was reading my packet, I noticed the paragraph, it's on it's on page ninety-four of the packet, and it's in, it's right before the city profile. It says, in addition to the housing element update, the city wants to address SB three seven nine, which requires all cities to include climate adaptation and resiliency strategies in the safety element of the general plan in conjunction with the next housing element update. So maybe if you could speak to three seven nine?
Yeah, one of the things that there's a requirement that within one of the seven mandatory elements that we have is the safety element. And what I've included in the RFP is that the consultant will look at that as, as far as the climate adaptation step, that our safety element is compliant with what the state requires for them within the thing. That's, it's a requirement as we move forward in doing the housing element.
So it's more aligned with climate resiliency, not climate adaptation?
Yeah.
Yes, we have one more. So this is to the council, to the city manager, Albert Piacia, two ten Main Street. In terms of the RFPs that was put out, has that spelled out the scope of work entirely? Or is it still in the general state?
Yeah, what I can, as I can send you a copy of the, the RFP. It was online, it was in that kit. Yeah, it outlines the scope.
Well, the scope, take the time to look at.
Housing gone out yet? This is way, it's the fourth tonight.
Tonight we are approving it to go out.
Approving.
Then my questions are still relevant, I guess. Well, will the RFP and then the, the work resulting from the consultant look at a housing and jobs balance?
Probably not. I think it's going to look at housing. It's going to look at our housing element. It's going to look at the required health aspects from HCD that need to go into a required housing element. One of the things in here is a link to the HCD website that gives a pretty comprehensive outline of everything. And I'll send this to you.
Will it address what type of housing is needed?
Market rate, affordable housing.
And will it, will it be an ability, once this gets started, to sort of, you know, for lack of a better word, amend it? When you're in process? Are there pieces of scope or what that pop up need to be addressed? Or arise, I don't know if they pop up, but arise should be looked at?
I would imagine HCD has a framework for the housing element process. And then this is, they think that this will be one of the, the most housing, legislatively housing intensive periods going forward, I would guess that. I would think that things are going to pop up and it's included in here. Does it cost you more money? Yeah. Because also there's new staff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My understanding from an earlier comment is that the the reading numbers address the jobs housing balance. That it's the reading numbers that go into this. I think, yeah.
If there's no more comments or questions, I will open up the motion. The recommendation. If I have a motion, I have a second, I'll say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Then passes the announcement. Now we'll move on to our last discussion item, which is the minutes of the current meeting of the winner's city council on the application on January twenty-first.
Yes, I asked to have this pulled from the consent calendar and I thought about it a lot. Well, first off, I went and talked to John, I said manager, about the fact that we were being asked to approve draft minutes. And I didn't think that we should be approving draft minutes. And John said, well, we didn't have to, we could make them, you know, we could not call them draft minutes. But I I would still felt uncomfortable because I didn't think that there was enough information in the minutes. And to my way of looking at things, the minutes are a record of what went on in that meeting and they are publicly available. And they're, if two years from now, we want to know what happened in that meeting, it would be there. But if we approved the minutes as I saw them, I wasn't comfortable with it. So I talked to John about it and John said it was too complicated to put all the answers from the questions that were asked. And I, I agree, that would be pretty difficult, but I thought that we should have more than just the questions. And tonight, we have some of the answers from those questions, which I'm happy to see. But the information from the meeting was just too much to put everything in, I understand. So I, I didn't fight with John, I didn't argue, I just thought, okay, I guess I can go wrong with that. But after I left and started thinking about it, I still felt uncomfortable. So I called our city attorney, Ethan, and I said, am I wrong that in questioning this? And he said, no, I was, I could do that if I wanted to. And I just did not feel that they were a complete record of what had happened at the meeting. And John assured me that the results of the questions would go out to the public on Facebook. And I definitely believe that. And there's no question in my mind about that. But I didn't know whether the question, the information would be preserved. So I felt fairly comfortable that the public would get the results. But after a year or two, we might not be able to find those results again if they weren't actually in the minutes. So for that reason, I asked to have a, and the other part of this is that I couldn't talk to any of the other people on the council about it because of the Brown Act. And so I had no idea how the rest of the council felt about it. But after thinking about it and talking with Ethan, who did not tell me what I should do or could do, he just said, yes, I could, I could ask to have it pulled if I, so what? So I thought, well, I guess I'll do it. And the more I think about it, I would just soon approve draft minutes tonight and then get all the information that came from that meeting, like this list that we have now. And maybe some screenshots of the information that came in on the big screen as we were going, compile that and have those in the minutes. And then I'd be happy to approve the minutes. But that's why, where I am, and I don't know where the rest of the council is.
Anywhere I'm at, anybody else want to speak?
I'm in winners. Yeah, I, in a nutshell, I would like, as a council member, to recommend that we explore and adopt a process of capturing public comment and information in our future public meetings. We have, we have a lot of public meetings that will be coming up. I think that's what that whole meeting is about. And I think we should just explore and adopt a process so it's accurate. Just going back to the August twenty-first joint land use meeting, there were a lot of people that came and spoke and then the notes came out, I think it was September third, but we didn't adopt them. And then they came back again in October, I think the first, and then the fifteenth, and then we eventually adopted them. And I feel like we put our hands in the blender on notes on that. And I just, we'd like to avoid sticking my hand in the blender again on notes. So we can find a process. If we could explore and adopt a process, I think it would just reduce the tension about transparency in general on public comment notes. But we, with the one caveat, and I don't want to undo my own argument here, is we're in a, we're a small town and we have a small crew. So it has to be something that respects everybody's time at having a small crew. And I think it can be done with technology, I believe, is out there.
I think, get a tape recorder. Record the meeting and that's part of the record, done.
We have it recorded, right?
Yeah.
We, we actually, we, we have every meeting fully recorded on YouTube. If somebody wants to go back and look at that, and we, we don't delete any of the minutes.
The minutes here in this packet are not meant to be per paid or for work. That's what the recording is for.
If I could give one answer, and all minutes look the same in the previous packet. And, you know, boy, I'll tell you, you know, I'm glad that some folks noticed that it says draft on it. And the reason why SCAP did that was there's going to be the draft minutes, and then there's going to be the approved minutes. And once the council approves the minutes, then we will publish the minutes going forward. Instead of saying draft and watermark, it'll say approved. So that's the reason why they say draft tonight. I didn't know that, I don't know if the council member knew, but we, we, I think we record everything. We, through our YouTube channel, we record each meeting that way. You know, the, the idea that we would just, you know, you're right, there is technology. I guess you could get voice recognition technology and you could just publish everything that everybody said. the policy of the city has been to put, take action as of what happens.
Did you say then that when we get all the information, the minutes that aren't draft minutes will come back to us? Are you saying that?
The council will get a copy of what are the draft minutes. And then when they get approved, then we will publish them in the record as being approved.
What I see is, I mean, I read through the minutes and I thought they captured the content of the meeting pretty well. I mean, it says, following the interactive presentation, city managers and staff will summarize the answers and agreements. We have now, I mean, they weren't things that, you know, that wasn't what we had at the meeting. These are notes about what happened at the meeting and saying what we're going to do in the future. And it says, we will summarize these and, you know, we will make them available to the public for further input. I mean, the way those questions were asked, there was a lot of information that we gathered that night with that type of polling and using the app. I think if we try to go in at every meeting and capture every word that's said, you know, all the responses, I think our minutes are going to get so long and it is going to end up costing the city a lot of money. We do have a recording. If someone wants to go back and look at that, those are available. I think I'm fine with the minutes the way they are. I mean, I would like to see us come back maybe with a report on future agenda items, saying, okay, here's, we've summarized all the input from that meeting. Here's what we got, and we have that on a future agenda item. And then we can, that's, that's what, you know, this is what, all the input that people gave answering the question, here's a question, here's the answers we have, what was given the most, and you kind of analyze it a little bit more. But I think the purpose of the minutes was to report what we actually did at that meeting. And I think we covered that.
Yes.
I just wanted to speak to one point, just to clarify from a legal point of view with the minutes. The, the one fundamental thing that the minutes provide from a legal point of view is, is when you take a specific action, what it says in the minute, that's the record of the action that's been taken. And so, for example, you know, sometimes we have resolutions, but then sometimes but then sometimes you modify the resolution or sometimes you take an action without a resolution. And then the minutes are the record of that action. So that's, from, from my perspective, that's the most important thing. In, in meetings like this, where an action wasn't taken, but it was primarily a, an opportunity for discussion, then the minutes inform that as part of the record. But the other documents that are out there, like, like the YouTube video and all the documents that were provided, that's also available kind of the public record because they're public records that are available to people. And if someone say, we're making a future decision down the road where this is informed by what was discussed at that point, people can bring that back up in that future discussion. Say we're making a decision on the general plan. They can always reach back and go to the YouTube videos or go to the other information that's posted on the Facebook site. And that's part, those are, those are public documents. So they can always go back to that. And then as part of that decision, it will be part of the public record that's in front of the council when you make the decision. So the, the minutes are a part of all of it, but they don't necessarily have to be the end all be all except when you're making, taking an action. And since that wasn't the case here, it's not, you know, you can look at kind of the collective whole as part of the outcome of that meeting rather than just looking at the minutes. So that's something that they can consider.
So I guess, any other discussion on this?
I'm just add to that that I understand. I heard what Ethan said. I am happy to go along with that. But I would have felt much better had we had this, because this answers some of the questions. What we had in the minutes is what we had on the agenda. The agenda said, we're going to ask these questions. And the minutes said, we ask these questions. But here we have the answers.
So what council member you is referring to is something that you were just handed tonight. I'm a guy, I said, these are the questions and this is just a whole list of the answers that were submitted during that meeting. There's nothing summarized as far as what answer was given the most. None of that has been analyzed. It's just a list of the answers provided, correct?
That's correct. I'll, I'll put this up on the website. It's not tomorrow. Here's one of the things, we did this. There are some things that we don't use all the time. We're, we're the jack of all trades. We're masters of this. Here's what we've learned from this. Number one, we should limit the number of responses that people can do using this function. Number two, we grabbed everybody's cell phone number. So we know some people that are super textures. And I, I will tell you, what did we learn? We learned that it wasn't Taylor that was putting Winters Express up 40,000 times as far as the thing. But do we know who did that? We do. And, you know, we, you know, all of a sudden we're real, we're like, man. But, yeah, you know, did somebody put beer to one of the questions like 30 times? Yeah, same guy. Putting beer. We, we've learned a lot from this. The reason why we want to condense is some people said that we need to include Hispanics and Latinos and all that. We don't want to condense all these things down into things. But before I leave tonight, I'll send this that people want to see it. But one of the things, if, if you read the minutes, it says that staff had committed to bring this thing back. It's a February 18th meeting where we condensed everything to just, to bring reporting back. I apologize. I said that I would do it on, on the 18th. Sometimes, you know, being a one man band is not easy. I sat and, and I, I knew that this was something that would come up. So I, I sat there and I worked really good as much as I could to start crushing that the information came in a comment delimited format. So I had to do a lot of conversion and a lot of sorting and everything. I took out all the snarky comments and all the 2020 and all the, some of the stuff that wasn't assigned.
And I think it's important to do that, to go in and not just make this list, but to analyze it like we're talking about doing. And that's something that you'll come back to. It's what, you know, here's what the answers that were given most for this question, not that everything isn't important that was given, but there were some things, I think, that were given that were not appropriate for the questions being asked. And that needs to be filtered out.
I'd just like to add, I thank John for doing that. And I'm not trying to uphold what I did, but in, I think that we should have just not tried to approve the minutes tonight. And had those minutes come back for approval next week. And then you wouldn't have had to work so hard. And it wouldn't have.
So what you're wanting is to bring the minutes back with the summary of the answers?
Well, I was just saying that we didn't have to approve the minutes tonight.
Well, yeah, but we can continue that, I suppose, right, Ethan?
Good.
I mean, if, is that what you're asking? Is to have the, the analysis of these answers in the minutes? What are, what exactly do you want changed of versus the minutes we have now?
I'm, I'm, if this is added to the minutes, I think I'd be pretty happy. The other thing I, I thought that we could do is take screenshots of the, all the posters that were listed handwritten around the room and those could become part of the record too. I don't think we, I don't want us to have the staff or John spending hours doing minutes. But if they're going to come back, yeah, I'd like to see that in there.
Okay. So I just think it's a worthwhile discussion to decide how, you know, to discuss how are we going to represent information to winners, to people? And I, I like that I got this. I'm sorry that you have to type it or, you know, wrangle it. I'd be happy to put on it next year.
Are the screenshots okay?
Yeah. I think we can.
Do our best, sure. Well, I, I can tell you what we can do. I mean, we've got the printouts that have way too much information.
Don't throw rattles. Well, I'm, I'm probably on board with this proposal. I think it's a good, it's a good statement. Actually, most of the people, most of the people are. Sometimes I guess you can tell. Yeah, I would kind of agree with that. So where are we? We're, we've got them in the draft minutes before us. Question is, do we want to, I opened it up for a motion to approve the draft minutes, bring them back? additions or changes? Or do we want to continue it to a future meeting?
Since you pulled this, you should get the opportunity to comment.
Is there anyone in public that would like to comment?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, two times. I would like to note that the city of Winters goes way beyond any other city that we work with in terms of including this information online. Despite being a one man show, there's a whole lot of information and transparency as part of that. That said, you can't see the slides on the YouTube video and you can't hear you guys talk, especially to each other. While we should embrace all of these technologies and getting all of the information out there, it's best that we remember, in my opinion, not to be wholly reliant on these digital technologies to tell the whole story. I think including information where possible when it's taken. If we take a whiteboard and take down bullet points, then I think it's great to include. But let's not rely wholly on this YouTube video as a documentation because if you can, if you go through it, you can't see any of the slides in the, for example, for this meeting. I'd like, if possible, but the local media is happy to play a role in disseminating information outside the legal guideline that minutes taken as well. If you want to share that with us, we'd be happy to share that as well.
Anyone else like to comment? Yes.
I attended both those joint meetings. And I'd like to say that, to me, those are very different types of meetings. And they're different in terms of notes and it's not so much action items that happen during those meetings. Yet you are specifically asking for public input. And when the public input is, is sort of, well, a bunch of people said this and a bunch of people said that. Or anyway, to me, the more detail, and I don't, I don't mean to kill you off on these meetings, having to do these notes, but the more detail that is given, you know, so and so got up to speak and, you know, maybe you just summarized what they said, but it's an affirmation to the public that they're being heard, that what they say matters and it goes into public record. Whereas if it's completely summarized and then it's just sort of lost.
Comment. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Yes.
I'd feel like it to again. I, much to my wife's degree, and I was on vacation in Hawaii during the meeting, the public comment meeting. And I tried to tune in and watch it live on YouTube. It was utterly unwatchable. And I'll explain what I mean by that. The shot was unviewable. It had a shot of Councilwoman Lawrence Leffier, part of Councilman Harold's hand. You could not read the screen whatsoever and, and you couldn't hear the audio. Now, I'm not up here to complain. I'm up here to suggest that, as I said earlier, there are plenty of members of this community who are very talented at doing a lot of things. And maybe we can find someone who could help with the audio visual presentation. For example, I don't think people, I think people are looking at the back of my head right now and it's not that difficult to do. So I'm here to volunteer to help. I've worked 35 years in the television business. I'm not asking any compensation for doing it, but if someone would like to talk to me about helping get the picture out, the picture and sound better, I'm willing to help. I just think we could do a better job technologically. It's not that difficult. Just my opinion.
Not that difficult.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm not willing to help.
Just take money. Okay, so, anybody else who'd like to speak? Okay. I'd like to proceed. How would you like to proceed, Tom?
Well, I told everybody the way I felt. I thought maybe the rest of the council could say how they feel about it. I, I'll, I'll draw on the motion just so that we get home tonight.
Okay.
I, my motion is that we get whatever information we have without spending any more time than necessary, bring it to the next council meeting for approval.
More, this is Joe.
That's from their workshop. Correct. I'll second that. Wait, a motion and a second? All members, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So the city manager's report.
Mayor Keltz, a couple lines. Staff now, last week with the folks from Neighbor Works regarding the self-help project, really a positive meeting with them. Dan, Lisa, Savian. I think we had the structure for basically trying to move the project forward. Actually, we're going to, I have to get to the attorney and we're going to work on the structure of an agreement. They came in just as advertised. They are, they are really a good group. We need to structure a couple of things that, quite frankly, staff didn't have the expertise on. So going to work that. Just for the council's information, I'll, the League City Managers Conference is just over in Napa. In the next couple of days, I'll, I'll go there. I sit on the executive board for our city managers department. Also on the council committee for putting things together. But it's always, it's nice and the good news is, is that it's close. You know, if you're in Southern California, you say you're going to Napa. Everybody looks at you sideways. Winters will say you're going to Napa. You're going, why are you, why are you going there? You know, why don't you get someplace nice? So anyway, go into the, the conference and we'll, we'll do our best to improve on some of this stuff.
Any other comments or announcements? I will adjourn meeting at 8:35. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, John, for the motion.
In Maritza, right?
No, I'm not staying in Maritza. I'm staying at the Howard Johnson.
No. Really? You might be staying here?
At the Howard Johnson.
I volunteered for that topic and I already reviewed all the topics and sent my answer. You know what I wrote on almost all of them? How does this appeal to rural cities?